Good evening. Welcome to the Tuck spray planner board virtual meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of November 16th.
Mr. Chairman, in the in the absence of Eric Ryder, do we want to postpone the minutes? Or you want to go forward? It's up to you.
I think we can go.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of November 16th, 2020 as written.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Mr. Fratalla.
Aye.
Someone's missing, is it? Oh, no. Steve Johnson.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. I only saw three dots, so okay.
So also, Mr. Chairman, the minutes of November 17th, 2020, the joint meeting with the Tuck spray selectmen, I'd like to approve both minutes as well as written.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Mr. Fratalla.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, town planners report. Anna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that was just an update on 2131 Main Street.
Yep.
The property owner will be a manager in the 11th meeting as requested. And I can answer any questions about the memo.
Board members, any questions?
I'm all set.
All set.
All set. All set, Anna. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? Anything else, Mr. McGinty?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda, 270 Main Street, non substantial change determination. Yeah, all right. Is someone representing this?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Other members of the board, John Smolak, Smolak and Vaughn, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm representing Cumberland Farms. With me this evening is John Bordolo, area manager at Cumberland Farms. And as you're aware, Cumberland Farms filed an application for non substantial change determination after the November 10th site visit at 270 Main Street at the Cumberland Farms. And so the requested determination relates only to the clarification of the landscaping maintenance obligations on the property. And in our October 16th letter to the board, it was clarified that Cumberland Farms property line extends only about eight feet beyond the retaining wall. And there's also additional land beyond the point of the town's public right of way on Old Main Street. And so although I wasn't personally involved in the site visit, I understand that representatives of Cumberland Farms did meet with the chairman, chairman and town planner on November 10th on site. And since that time, Cumberland Farms has completed the landscape maintenance work to the rear and side of its building, as well as to the area beyond the retaining wall extending toward the paved public way. And we've included materials and photographs related to that that maintenance work. So at this point, as noted in the request for non substantial change determination and the recommendations of the town planner, we are requesting confirmation or finding from the board that our recommendations, which are to include quarterly landscaping upkeep, as well as landscape maintenance behind the retaining wall to the rear of the building, be approved and also where consideration is being given to the placement of gravel in this area behind the retaining wall in the future to sort of minimize any future weed growth to ensure that the landscaping is maintained in an appropriate way. So with that said, Mr. Chairman, happy to take any questions that you may have.
Very good. Board members, at first, Mrs. McGinty, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, so I just add that since this was an action that was brought by the town and it was not a requirement for property owners to maintain the right of way landscaping, that the board, my recommendation is the board that they would waive the fee for the non substantial change.
Right.
Because this is an additional requirement and it wasn't a part of the special agreement as a condition. That's it.
That's good. Thank you, Mrs. McGinty. Board members, Mr. Fratalla.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I've been to that site a number of times. We had a ton of meetings about Cumberland Farms to approve it. You know, it's a great location, especially with Cumberland Farms there now. Regarding your request, regarding Anna, Anna, town planner's request for the waiver of the fees, I'm all set for that. But just, just as a note, Mr. Chairman, in my opinion, I mean, with the amount of business that goes in and out of Cumberland Farms on a daily basis, the amount of traffic that's in and out of it on a regular basis. I mean, maintenance on the site and down the site and all over the site has got to be maintained, you know, regardless. I've been to the back area and I know the area well as far as all the debris down there. And Mr. Smolak, thank you very much for getting it cleaned up. It looks great. But I mean, you're coming, we're coming, you're coming at the Tuck spray and you're passing Cumberland Farms on the left as one of the, one of the first sites you see when you come to the town. So it looks great now. You know, I just hope you can guys can keep it up. And as far as the back, you know, thanks for doing that extra work back there. And the only problem I see is the land across it from you is kind of in disrepair as well. So we're going to have to get on top of the town to make sure somebody gets a hold of that or cleans that, whoever does own it, whether it be the town or the owner of the property, because it's not that great back there as well. So but I'm all in favor of the waiver of the fees and the request for the non substantial change. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fratalla. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll agree with Mr. Fratalla. I have no issue with the substantial change. I have no issue with granting the waiver for the fee. Otherwise, I'm all set.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Delaney.
Yeah, I, I agree with Vinnie and Steve. I'm all set with this, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you. The meeting we had, Mrs. McGinty and I had with the representatives from Cumberland's was very productive. They understood the situation, even though they don't own the land, it's no different than a homeowner being on a street, cutting his grass down to his lot line, but being the taking is maybe five or six feet away. No one's going to leave it rough under their house, so it shouldn't be left rough behind a business, especially with there are houses across the street from it. They did do a great job cleaning it up. I just hope that the quarterly is sufficient enough to maintain it, to keep ahead of it. I understand the expense, but you know, it's still someone else has to look at it. And it got so bad down there that it was growing into the Cumberland's property near the wall. So you cut it in time and it was good. It's not going to grow for the next three months, so let's keep it up and we'll be all set. Thank you. Anything else from the board? Hearing none. What's the pleasure of the board? Mr. Johnson?
So first, I guess I'd make a motion to waive the fee for non substantial change.
Yep.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Mr. Fratalla.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Johnson.
So a motion to, to deem this a non substantial change.
All right. On the motion, all in favor say, second, thank you. On the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Mr. Fratalla.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Johnson.
As to the non substantial change itself, I'd make a motion to grant the non substantial change requested with the conditional condition as listed in comment two, Mrs. McGinty, that the landscaping maintenance schedule as outlined in the applicant's memorandum letter of December 11th, 2020 be included as well.
Thank you.
Under item four.
Is that a second, Mr. Fratalla?
Yes, second.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Delaney. Mr. Fratalla.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Delaney. Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Well, thank you, Mr. Smolak. I appreciate you coming or getting on with us and taking care of that situation down there. Thank you.
Well, well, thank you. Cumberland Farms strives to be a good neighbor and we hope to continue on that effort. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is DPW sidewalk discussion. I don't know how far we're going on this, but Mrs. McGinty, do you have anything on this?
Um, so this was originally on the agenda before we had scheduled the board selection meeting. So I figured I'd just leave it on there and I sent the memo as kind of a summary. And so this is just in case anyone wants to have further discussion. Vinnie and I, Mr. Fratalla and I did meet with DPW. So my memo summarizes that. Yeah, and that's all I have to add.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a couple of comments as well.
All right, Mr. Fratalla.
So Mr. McGinty and I, myself, met with Mr. Hardeman and Mr. Gilbert. And it was, you know, a lot of insight from, from their point of view as far as what they have to deal with. On the memo, you see the attached fiscal years that are, that they're looking for, you know, new sidewalks with Whipple Road and so forth and so on. So, you know, like we all know, a lot of people in town are looking for sidewalks, but there's so many areas that could use them, but the funds, like, like we know, are not always there to produce some of those sidewalks. So with Chashin Tech being coming, coming up to be done in the next year or so, that's a start. But there's a lot of other factors that people and the residents need to, need to realize that have to take place before we can just go ahead and put a sidewalk on the street. You know, we learned about drainage and stormwater and street obstacles, like light poles and utility poles and all that right of way determination. So rock walls. So, so the plan they have, I, I think myself, is a pretty good plan. They're also looking at grants to use to do some funds, like Fisk Road was one of them they discussed. So I think as a board, maybe we should just look at and, and work, you know, cohesively with the DPW as far as getting new sidewalks done. I know there's an action in place to get some work done on Main Street with some money we have. So I think we should probably focus on that first and then, then go forward with new sidewalks as we get money coming in. So again, we, it was a productive meeting, I thought, a lot of insight and hope to keep it going forward. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Hearing none. Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
One question. Do we have, do we have any CPC money that's available to be used for sidewalks? I don't know. Maybe Miss McGinty can, can give us some light on that. I mean, I'm on the CPC committee, but they don't need often enough to even ask that question. I was just wondering if the, you know, we've done a wonderful job down on Livingston Street with the baseball fields and the soccer fields with the lighting and all. We've put a lot of money into it. Is there a way now that we can use some of that money for the, for the sidewalk projects? Is my question.
Okay. Anna, could you run that by the power of the B?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yep, I can look into that.
Very good. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Delaney?
I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, I believe, is Robbie Terrace, Robbie Terrace. Motion to continue this until 12, no, 11121. 11121. Do I have a motion?
So move.
On the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Fratalla.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, 71 Serenity Drive, non substantial change request. Who's representing, discussing this? Drew? Hi, hi. All right.
Hello, Mr. Chair. Board members, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Drew Vardakis. I'm an engineer and project manager from Wood. We are here representing the applicant, Stinkarpa. This is in regards to the solar project at the Sunbrook disposal area. So if you have the request in front of you, we've submitted a non substantial change request and this is regarding the decommissioning plan costs. So in the letter we submitted, we're requesting this requirement be waived. This was a condition in the October 2018 site plan review special permit application. So the reasoning for this is as this project has gone through permitting with Mass DEP, there's also a financial assurance mechanism that's required from the state, excuse me. So it was the request of the applicant rather to have, rather than to have multiple bond requirements in place that the higher governing requirement through Mass DEP would remain in place for the project. So that's the basis of this request. If you go through the materials we submitted back in November, we have our cover letter, the application sheet, and also the detached drawings, which have not changed as a result of this request. It's merely a decommissioning cost item. So with that, I have Graham Dukowski and Olivia Pladia also from my team on, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. McGinty, do you have anything to, you'd like to add to this?
No, Mr. Chairman. My recommendation is in the memo is in relation to what they are requesting. And then I would recommend the board might want to say removing condition number five of the special permit, where it has a requirement of the bond requirement. So.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mrs. McGinty. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm fine with removing it, but what I'd like to do is I'd like to put in place then that says so long as the DEP's requirement remains in effect as it stands today, that way if for some reason it's down the line for unexplainable reasons, the DEP decides to do away with this condition, then we're left with nothing. I'm fine with not double dipping, but I want there to be at least, you know, one thing in place. So I have no problem making it so long as the DEP version is in effect and that they're subject to it. As long as there'll be, I mean, other than that, I'm fine. I don't care otherwise. All right.
Fine. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any representatives have any discussion on that?
Graham, do you have any comments on that?
I have no issue with that.
You're all set?
Yes, sir.
Drew?
All set.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fratalla, any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, that was one of my biggest questions is how would the town protect it? But if that stays in effect, then I'm fine with that, you know, going forward down the road. I was just questioning the guys that are here tonight. What's the status down there? Where are we as far as, as far as the project goes?
The project will be mechanically complete the first week of January. There's been a holdup on the delivery of the batteries due to COVID shipping delays and also the storm we just recently had. So the batteries will be delivered to site hopefully next week. And then shortly thereafter, the wiring associated with the batteries will be done and mechanical completion will be deemed first week of January, potentially the second. And then we are waiting for the utility right now for a revised interconnection service agreement, which, you know, has to incorporate a certain metering scheme that they just implemented as of a few months ago.
Okay. So when do you figure you'll be guys will be on, on board and on, you know, operational?
We're hoping to be operational within the first half of 2021. National Grid is giving us a very inflated timeline, unfortunately, and we're working every angle we can to cut down on that substantially.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good luck.
No problem. Thank you.
I have a question to follow up on that, if I may. Is that something that normally happens with between yourself and National Grid?
Well, with the Massachusetts Smart Solar Program, which is, you know, the, you know, it's starting to kind of create a big backlog with National Grid and I don't really think, quite honestly, they know how to handle it in regards to metering. And, you know, they're a very big bureaucratic agency, as I'm sure you guys can appreciate. And then, you know, they've taken their time to develop these standards and unfortunately developers like us just have to roll with the punches and try to implement them as quick as possible. So.
Well, thank you for that answer.
No problem.
Very candid. Thank you. Mr. Delaney.
No, I'm all set with it. You know.
And, and I am too. There's any other discussion on this from your side, Drew?
I think we're all set.
Okay, great, great. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to just deem a non substantial change.
Second.
Any, on the discuss, any discussion? Hearing none. On the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Fratalla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Johnson.
Make a motion to grant the non substantial change as requested with the conditional language that so long as the applicant is subject to the DEP's current decommissioning requirements. I think that's it, right? That's all we need.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right. On the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Mr. Fratalla.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming before us and it was a successful evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. Take care. Have a good night.
Good night, now. Next item on the agenda, 24 Sunny Slope, on release as built.
Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion to continue this to the January 11th.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. That's right. I was looking for that. Thanks.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a time certain for that, Mrs. McGinty?
Just administrative action, so it just goes on the list.
Oh, yeah, you're right. You're right. You're right. All right. Thank you. Motion is made and seconded. On the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Mr. Fratalla.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, 333's special permit, site plan special permit.
913, right?
913, May E Street.
Oh, how did I get by that?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, that one will be continued, they're requesting to continue to January 11th. And that one can go on at seven o'clock if that's what.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to continue 913 East Street to our January 11th, 2021 meeting at 7:00 p.m.
Very good. On the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fratalla, you're usually quicker than that.
Well, second.
On the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Fratalla.
Aye.
Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right. Now.
Mr. Chairman, I was hoping Mr. Delaney could kick in a little bit here, you know?
Next item on the agenda, 333 Main Street.
Last one.
Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, site plan special permit. We have a motion to waive the reading of the special notice.
So move.
Forward, Mr. Chairman.
On the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Mr. Fratalla.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Yes, Mrs. McGinty.
So I just want to state for the record that the application is for a modification of the site plan special permit.
Right.
And they did submit a new form, so we have publicly noticed that as a site plan special permit, but as a modification. So I just want to state that for the record.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sweeney, are you here to representing this?
Yes, sir. Lauren Sweeney with Kimling Horn and then Aldra Gomez with Electrify America is here with me this evening.
Okay. I only see you on the screen, so.
He's on the call, so he can answer any questions about operations that you may have.
Do you have anything you want to give us other than what's on the planner submitted?
No, I can either talk from the plans, I can share my screen, or I can just talk you through it, whatever you prefer, sir.
Okay. To me, it seemed rather straightforward. But if there's any questions from the board, we'll put it on the screen and we'll go from there.
Mr. Chairman, can we do that anyways, just because of the folks at home?
Okay.
Yes.
Good idea.
With a Q.
And could I, Anna? Mrs. McGinty.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I have to leave for two minutes, so I'm going to lay this on the table for two minutes.
Okay, so it's a quick break.
Will you fall off the chair?
It's a quick break.
Hi, Vin.
Hi, Jay. How are you?
I don't know what happened here.
While the chairman's gone, just to remind everybody, best if you stay on mute if there's not a person talking. That way we don't pick up background noise, that we don't realize we're picking up. If there's not a person talking, that way we don't pick up background noise, that we don't realize we're picking up.
Sorry, ladies and gentlemen, hockey, hockey is live in Tewksbury. Brian, I'm all set.
Are you ready, sir?
Yes.
Okay, so we're proposing the installation of the four new charging stations right here in the rear of the center aisle. So this, this is the, the site plan view. For those of you who have the plans in front of you, it's sheet C three. So the four charging stations are right here. And then this is the proposed equipment for associated chargers. So we have a transformer, a switchgear, and then these are the power cabinets, the power, the actual dispensers that the electric vehicles will plug into. So on C five, we also have a rendering of what these charging stations will look like, just to give you a sense of their view in, in the parking lot. So we had gotten back and forth with the, the building commissioner for a long time on, on where to place these. And then ultimately ended up in this location because all of the equipment is in what is existing green space. So minimum impact to the overall parking count, we're, we're losing about one space, including these EV charging spaces as charging spaces. So I can, I can open it up for, for any questions that you guys might have about the operations, about our plan.
Mr. Fowler, you're still on mute. Mr. Fowler, still on mute. Maybe if Bob works out the, the volume thing, maybe. Vinnie, why don't you, why don't you go first?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, you know, I actually reviewed the plans. And I like the location of where it, where you're proposing the, the charging stations. I think it's, it's a great spot. I was hoping you didn't put it down closer towards the building because that just absorbs too many critical parking spaces for the use by the residents of the, that attend the store or that, you know, go to the store. So I'm happy about that. I'm not that concerned about the couple of parking spots you're going to use specifically for the charging stations because there's a lot of spaces there for the general public as well. So I'd be willing to vote for the waiver of the parking alleviation and for the record, I'm all in favor of that, so with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Fowler, definitely not picking up your, your volume, so I'm going to assume we move to Mr. Delaney. So Mr. Delaney, why don't you go ahead next?
Okay, the, the only question I have is, we're there so far back into the parking lot. I don't have a problem with the stations, I don't have a problem. Do you have any means to make sure that there is no vandalism to those stations where they are so far away from the store?
Aldrick, do you want to answer that?
Sure, we're adding, we're proposing a light installation. Can you hear me?
I, I'm not picking him up clearly, I can't hear what he's saying.
How, how about this, is this better?
Yes, that's better.
Okay, yeah, so we're proposing the installation of a light to make sure that these stations are illuminated. We find that that has steered Eddie's, a lot of vandalism away. We've got a nationwide program going on to take sites that have experienced vandalism and we're adding lights to them, trying to bring that down, and it seems, it seems to be working.
If, if you've got it covered, because it's Walmart that's got to take the blunt if there is a problem. But I am, I, I like the idea of the stations, I think it's a wonderful idea. And I don't have a problem with any of it. I just want to make sure you're protected as far as where they are so far away from the store. But you've answered my question, so I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. I think the chairman's working on his connection issue, so I guess I'll go next. I have, I don't have an issue with the proposal. Before I make my next comment, though, I would just say that with Mr. Delaney just asked about the security and vandalism, the one thing I might suggest, and I'm looking at the board members to be interested in, that if in the future we find that there is vandalism going on, and, you know, perhaps with, at the request of the Tewksbury Police, that we might require Walmart to install a security camera at that end. That, that way that area could be monitored, if it comes to that. I'd like, I'd just like to put it in there as a placeholder. You know, because if it turns out that stuff's going on down there and the police keep getting called, it's something that maybe would help alleviate them having to come there often with no resolution because, you know, soon as they leave, you know, the, the site's open to be vandalized again. So that would be my request, at least on the security. I mean, we're not going to make you do it now, but I think if it comes down to it, then it might be something we might want to request in the future. My only other comment is, this is the second sort of upgrade of new things that we've approved recently. But the, the, the previous one for the draw, for the pickup area hasn't been done yet. So my only concern is that we keep approving things, but then they don't, they don't go anywhere. So I'm curious what, where the, what the status is of our previous approval before we go forward with this one.
So Electrify America is a tenant to Walmart, so they're, they're leasing this part of the parking lot to install these chargers. I can assure you, we will be moving forward. We can't, unless Aldrick knows more, we can't speak to the, the, the drive through pickup, which I believe was the last previously approved plan, correct?
Yeah, definitely, yeah, that's what, that's what we did. No one who's here this evening can comment on that.
Correct, we represent, I, yes, we're here for Electrify America, the tenant of Walmart.
All right, I, I, again, the project itself, I have no issue with, I'm fine with where you put it down the other end, so it's not, you know, competing with spaces turned over most often in the building. So other than that, I'm fine. Mr. Chairman, back to you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Two things that come to my mind. In your observation of the, the area, is that well lit from the parking, parking lights, parking lot lights?
So like Mr. Gomez mentioned, we're adding a light here, not only to protect the people that are using the charging station so that they can see what they're doing, but also for vandalism to prevent that.
That's good, second question. We have, Walmart's a good, a good doobie, allowing motorhomes and tractor trailers to come in and park overnight so as to, you know, for safety reasons, instead of being on the highway. We wouldn't want tractor trailers that are seventy five feet long to be parking, and this is where they park, down the end of the lot. I saw one yesterday, as a matter of fact, parked one lane over from about where you're going to have these stations. One lane, two lanes over from the, the entrance. And if they're parked, you're not going to be able to get into these sites to get to your charging stations. So I don't know what kind of signage or obviously if, it should be a notification that if a truck is parked here, please don't park here, you know, power stations for electric vehicles or something along that line. I don't know if you run into this problem before, Ms. Sweeney?
Aldrick, do you know if they've had that issue in the past?
We have issues in the past with just non electric vehicles occupying the stalls, but with nothing, nothing on, on, on the level of overnight large form campers.
Okay.
Yeah. We do have these signs in front of the charging stations and pavement markings as well.
Yeah, I apologize for not seeing a couple of these things because I was away from my, from my duties here. But hopefully that will work and a quick call to the P D and they can move them along if they have to. Thank you. Board members, Mr., is, everybody's had their say, right?
Yes.
Okay, it does sound like, Brian, is there anybody on the phone? For this site?
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman, but as normal, we are about a minute or so behind.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have another comment if I could.
Sure, Mr. Fattalia.
Well, I guess regarding the location of the signs and the, the, the stations and the signs, do you ever put anything on the pavement itself identifying the spots as electric parking, charging stations only? Oh, there you go.
Yep, yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one additional question, more curiosity, do these run twenty four seven regardless of whether the store is open?
Yes, these are open to the public twenty four seven.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Brian, anything yet?
Still no callers, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I, I would assume that no one is going to call. Board members, anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. McGinty, any question for you?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
You have a motion to close the hearing.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second, we have second, on the motion on favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the ayes have it. Mr. Fattalia.
Aye.
Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, closing the hearing, it's the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve. Would we decide this was, this is a modification to the site plan special permit? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so the modification, the site plan special permit is requested with the contingency that, well, first, the one I mentioned earlier, which is that if vandalism or, you know, other similar issues occur, the board may ask that a, that a security camera be installed if the issues, you know, get to a point where the Tewksbury Police or anyone feels that we would have that installed for security reasons. As well as, and Mrs. McGinty, if you could help me out on this, I just want to make sure I got this right. The waiver that we need, actually, I apologize, we should have done the waivers first then, right? I apologize.
Oh, yes.
I guess we gotta go backwards, so first on the waivers, if I read the first couple of comments together, the waiver is being, we need to waive the parking requirement to seven hundred and one parking spaces, is that correct?
Yeah, so ultimately, it's going to be the building commissioner to determine if the EV spaces will count as a normal space towards the parking count.
But in the event they don't?
In the event they don't, it'll be seven oh one is what the waiver will need to be for.
So that I guess I would make the motion to grant a waiver that in the event that the EV parking spaces are not considered or become removed from the consideration of parking spaces, that the board allows seven hundred and one parking spaces. If that's the case. Mrs. McGinty, does that cover it?
I agree.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Johnson.
That's, that's my motion on that waiver.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
On the motion on favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the ayes have it. Mr. Fattalia.
Aye.
Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
So the, Mrs. McGinty, that doesn't, there's nothing more in comment two, the comment three can go into the, the main motion?
So comment three, the applicant did submit a revised copy of that document, and you got that on your applicant and your packets? So that's one, so I, and number two was just for information.
So then to, to the motion, I'm sorry, my motion on the grant, grant the modification of the site plan special permit with the condition that, as listed, as I discussed before, about the security camera.
Second, Mr. Johnson.
On the motion on favor. Any session? On the motion on favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the ayes have it. Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Fattalia.
Aye.
Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda. One eighty one Pine Street, applicant requesting a continuation till, to January eleventh, twenty twenty one. It's the pleasure of the board.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue it to one eleven, twenty twenty one.
At what time?
So, Mr. Chairman, that would be seven oh five.
All right.
Okay, seven oh five.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, on the motion on favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the ayes have it. Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Fattalia.
Aye.
Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is for seven twenty, four sixty four, four sixty eight. Main Street Independence Engineering for Group One.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Chairman, make a motion to waive the public reading?
Yes, I'm gonna do, let me finish reading.
Sorry.
For a signed special permit. Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Make a motion to waive the public reading?
On the motion on favor say aye.
Chairman, second.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Mr. Fattalia.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And the next item on the agenda is, did we?
No, no.
We motioned that for a certain time certain, right? Yes, we did. Next item on the agenda.
No, Mr. Chairman, that one isn't being continued for four sixty four.
No, 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 oh, I know that. Yeah, so four sixty four, four sixty four, four sixty eight Main Street. The Group One Realty signed special permit. Motion to waive the reading of the public notice.
That's what we just did.
Oh, you did?
That's what we just did.
I thought we were still, okay. Um, well, fine. What's the, go, let's go representing the four sixty four, four sixty eight Main Street. Mr. Sanders?
Yes, that would be me. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for not making me wear shoes. But I am here representing Group One Automotive, the owner and operator of Ira Toyota of Tewksbury at four sixty four, four sixty eight Main Street. In twenty seventeen, Group One came before the planning board to get an expansion of their existing property approved as part of a modified plan application that was granted by this board at that time. And at that time, one of the conditions of the approval was that signage would be dealt with at a later time. That the signage was acceptable, and then we would come back in the future to update and adjust Toyota's current standards. As construction has progressed, they are looking to get the current Toyota signage package approved at this location. As you see in the packet, we are requesting approval for four building signs and three directional signs. Three to be on the immediate front of the, or three of the building signs to be on the immediate front facing Main Street, one facing to the west for service customers, and the three directional signs to be at the main entrance. Now, the package that we are looking to approve and which was actually denied by the building inspector earlier this year does involve a couple of waivers of sections of the code. The first waiver being a maximum of three foot height on a building sign. If you'd like, I'll share my screen here.
Please.
Okay. Now, the, the primary building sign is gonna be the Toyota logo, uh, with the words Toyota underneath. That is internal, internally illuminated and it's nine feet high, whereas we're limited to three feet. Or building signs on the front of the building. Uh, there are two smaller front of the building signs. One is a red logo, one is the channel letters that say Ira. Uh, the service reception sign is also compliant, that'll be on the west side of the building. Uh, but the three directional signs, uh, are, they are each about 11 square feet, whereas we are limited to four square feet for each directional sign. So we're requesting relief of seven square feet for each one of those. Now, in terms of image, what we're proposing is very similar to what's out there now. Uh, currently, there are directional signs on site, there is building signage facing Main Street that is a, a logo that says, or a logo and the words Toyota that's internally illuminated, uh, with the word, or it's internally, I'm sorry, internally illuminated red. Uh, I understand from the comments that Mr. McGinty said or sent us that we do need to request a waiver for the internally illuminated red sign. Uh, I apologize for omitting that from the application. If we can add that to our waiver request at this time, I'd appreciate that.
All right. Any other waivers?
I believe the waiver that, uh, was cited in comment number one, was already requested, the one, uh, about the footage on the directional signs that was in our original application. Uh, I believe those are the only ones we're requesting.
Okay. Mrs. McGinty, if I may ask you, uh, based on what the, uh, conversation with the building inspector will satisfy his problems, his concerns?
Um, you know, I can't speak for the building commissioner, um, but, uh, these waivers do make it compliant with the zoning bylaws.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I may, his rejection letter only stated that a signed special permit had to be applied for. He didn't cite any specific things he was looking for in that.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Uh, and you, Miss McGinty. Do you want to continue, Mr. Sanders? Are you all set?
I'm, I'm set. It's a very simple application.
Very good. Um, it's a pleasure of the board. Um, let's see, Mr. Fattalia.
Mr. Chairman, um, you know, I, I have no problem with the, um, with some of the signs, Mr. Sanders, but my problem I have is we don't see the actual building model and the sign upon the building. So, I think I'd like to see how big this sign is gonna be compared to the structure of the building. Um, could you provide something like that for us at a, at a future meeting or somehow see something like that?
Sure, uh, it's, it's actually in our application package on page five, uh, and it should be shared on your screen right now.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's it there on the top?
Yes.
I was just trying to get a comparison after the size of the sign and the, and the design of the building and what it looks like. I mean, that's the black and white right there. I, I see the red though, but I mean, um, you know, on, as, as, you know, as some drawings that we might be able to see, I was hoping you submitted that with the application. So we, as the planning board and the public, could see the sign and the building, how it's gonna look and with the sign on it, because looking for a large sign, larger than what's allowed, so.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, you know, I was hoping you'd be able to do something like that for us, so it may have been in the packet, but, um.
Okay, um, am I still sharing here?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, yeah, so, yeah, let, we try resharing that. Yes, and when I was going through the package earlier, I skipped right over this sheet. Um, but it does show the four building signs that we are proposing. Uh, can you see those elevations?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so that shows the, the logo with the Toyota channel letters, those will be internally illuminated. Uh, this is just the logo over the door, which is not illuminated. The Ira channel letters over the door are also not illuminated, and the service reception on the side is, but it's going to be black and it's compliant.
Right. But, Mr. Sanders, I don't think you understand what I'm looking for. I was looking for an actual rendering of the building.
Okay.
And, and a complete mode with the sign on it, so that we could do a, you know, a comparison, look at the building with the logo on it and the sign on it.
Okay.
So I could, I could, you know, vote accordingly, you know, for the waiver, but.
Okay, um, I can certainly provide that. Uh, it's not gonna be substantially effort from this, because the building is gonna be white. Uh, and it is panelled very similar to this exhibit, uh, but I can provide that.
I don't know if my, my other board members are, you know, are in, uh, in agreement, but that was what I determined when I opened up the packet. You know, I'm all in favor of the signage. Uh, you guys have been a great neighbor for the town of Tewksbury, you've been there for a long, a lot of number of years, you, um, you're on our, you're on our Route 38 thoroughfare, so what I don't want it to be look like is a Route, Route One, like it is in Saugus with all the grout gigantic signs there without getting a good look at it.
Yeah.
And, uh, being able to vote favorably towards that sign that you're looking for. Um, so that's my, my request and my, and my, you know, reasoning behind that request, so. Other than that, you know, I don't have a problem with the, with the directional signs and all that, but that was my biggest concern, so. With that, I'll, I'll, um, I'll end, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fattalia. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, it's not so much that I have, uh, uh, an issue with okaying, like, you know, the, the extra signage, you know, for, for car dealerships, I mean, it's sort of reasonable. But the ones that I kinda have a question about though are the need for two signs right on 38 that say little more than sales, service, reception with arrows. I mean, I understand your main Toyota sign being out on 38. But why, why do, why do we need two signs that say sales, service, reception with arrows out on 38?
Well, unfortunately, once you enter this site, you basically have to make a decision where you're going right away. Uh, if you wanna park for sales, then you have to make a right and park in the sales area. Uh, this is mostly inventory parking over here, so we wanna direct our sales customers into the front door of the sales facility. And so, you know, when they turn into the driveway, we, we don't wanna have any mistake, this is where you go. And then once you pass that intersection, you know, continue going forward with the, uh, the sign number seven here, where the service drop off is.
I, I understand your, your logistical issues, um, but I'm, I'm more concerned with what's gonna be on 38 permanently. Then people drive by all day, every day. I mean, if, if you come into a car dealership, you know, some, some of what you're there for is a little bit self-explanatory when you're coming in the door. And if you manage to miss that first turn for sales, you know, that, that's sort of an internal problem for, on, on site. I'm not sure that I feel like every single person that drives up and down 38 has to stare at those two signs every time they pass there. So the people who happen to come in to Toyota will know when to take a right real quick. I, I, I just, I feel like it's excessive and they're not really, they're not really very decorative. I mean, they're just two big signs that say sales and service.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I, I'm not really sure I'm, I'm okay with that. They just, I just, that, you know, that puts three signs out on Route 38 and that neither of these two, do I feel like are either, you know, very, very good-looking signs or, you know, I, I, like I said, I just don't know about having two signs out there that just basically say sales and service reception. I don't know how the other board members feel. I, I have no issue with the rest of the signage, the signage on the building. But I mean, what these two signs are really meant to be is internal guidance. But they're really, they're being put up as pretty external signs.
Mm-hmm.
And to have two of them on, on top of it, I mean, is even doubly excessive to me. But, you know, you've got other board members, so, um, you know, let, I'll, I'll, I'll wait and see what the others think, but I'm not sure I'm, I'm okay with these two signs, the rest I'm fine with. But other than that, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I have, I'll have a question on this. Is there an island between the two lanes, uh, at the driveway?
Yes.
Okay, wouldn't one sign, could you put one sign there, double-sided, saying, doing the same thing? As two sign?
I, I can certainly take that back to my client, uh, and see if that would be, you know, a good compromise solution.
I agree with Mr. Johnson, it seems redundant. You've got arrows on one side pointing to the right, arrows on the left side pointing to the left. Uh, it just, uh, when they, they wouldn't know which way to go when they got in there. So if the, if the arrows, sales, service, reception, um, where is there a sign? Is number seven a sign that says service this way and?
Yes, and, uh, I will jump to that sheet.
Okay.
Number seven, where once you enter the driveway, uh, this is on the far side of the next parking aisle, sales to the right, service straight ahead.
All right, well, that, okay, that sign there, again, if you could put that instead of the two signs out on Route 38, the one. So, I mean, no one's gonna, no one's gonna be driving into there, that isn't coming off Route 38, so they'd see the, if it was, uh, in that island, if you're able to do that. Or, uh, on one side or the other, just, uh, facing from Main Street in with the, uh, signage such as what you have here, sales, service, reception.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just ask a question?
Yes.
So I know you just pointed out that island. Wouldn't a, couldn't a smaller sign be installed on that island?
Yeah.
That does what number seven does? I mean, I don't care if you wanna leave number seven, but couldn't a smaller sign do the exact same thing that number seven does? And then you can eliminate signs five and six. So the person, when they're first coming into the driveway, will get immediately notified that they wanna go to the right if they want sales. And then they'll be told again with the number seven sign, without having two, two additional signs out on the road and that say, sure, sales and service.
Well, I think, uh, one of the reasons we have the directional sign out on the road is to prevent uh, customers from going into the second driveway on the site, which is that, that's not a public entrance, and we don't want people going in there and getting lost driving around the inventory lot. Um, so, I, I would be amenable and, you know, I can.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I thought we had a conversation about that one before, that there's something across that entrance that prevents people from going in. No, didn't we have one of those breakaway things that was only for the emergency service to go in? When we talked about that way back.
That's possible. Uh, unfortunately, it's been three years since I've looked at this project. Uh, if that's the case, then obviously, you know, customers can't go.
You might not have been informed of that.
And I'll be honest, if we didn't have that conversation, then I'd say that I'd have it now, because I'd rather see that as a way to not have people go in the wrong entrance or the wrong driveway, because it's not an entrance, uh, the wrong driveway, and still not have these two signs out on 38. Like I said, I mean, that's just me, the other board members, you know, that's up to them, but they don't agree with me, I'm just one person. Um, I'll, I'll note the fact that as of right now, there's only four of us. But this, I don't think this is finishing up tonight anyways. Because it sounds like you're gonna have to get some answers from your clients, but
Right.
I, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm unlikely to be okay with those two signs. So I'll, I'll leave it at that and we can move on to everything else.
And I, I will discuss it with my client. Um, I would prefer to have at least one there, uh, you know, to prevent people from driving past the driveway and expecting to get into that second entrance, but they cannot.
Sure.
And then having to turn around somewhere, uh, but certainly I'm open to having one sign there and I'll discuss it with, uh, with Group One.
Very good. Um, Mr. Delaney, you have any questions?
Well, I guess the only question they have is why there's two of them? Why there's two signs? If there's an island that's gonna be there, obviously, one side of the island you're entering and the other side of the island you're exiting.
Right.
You, I don't think you need a sign to tell you sales and service when you're exiting. I think you need it more when you're entering. So, you, I, I would agree with what we've all been saying. I think one sign is good enough, and if you put it on the island, I, I think one sign is good enough.
The double.
The rest of the signs, the rest of the signs I'm okay with, but she's, uh, it's just the ones that are marked five and six. Uh, and it would have been nice, you know, they made a real nice sign for Toyota in front of the building, but this is on Route 38 and it's just a plain black and white sign, sales servicing. I mean, you know, you couldn't put like a red strip around it or something, make it look a little nicer. But as far as the signs on the building and all that, I'm okay with. I just don't see why we need two signs labeled five and six in the middle of an island.
Okay.
Okay, that's my, that's my only thing. But other than that, the rest of it, it seems pretty good to me. Uh, you know, I'm a firm believer in signs, because I tell those old people, put enough money into their business, that they should be able to advertise it. It's just that this sign here is, is not advertising, it's direction.
Right.
Okay, and we, I, I just think that sitting out where you're, you're doing a new building and a new everything, just a plain ordinary sign out front, it just doesn't make sense to me to be advertising it, you know? Sales and service, like, could you put Toyota on the sign or something of that nature? But other than that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Well, uh, Mr. Sanders, it appears that we're all on the same page here. Um, so if you can do something for us, I'm not gonna tell you what to do, but we've given you the suggestion, suggestions. Either two signs with doing what Mr. Johnson was saying, or putting, putting the single sign double-faced on the island. It's up to you.
Okay, I will discuss this with my client. But, Mr. Chairman, can I? Obviously, Toyota has, you know, certain standard signs, you know, we'll look at their package and see what, what they wanna see at this site and, you know, come to a resolution that's acceptable to you.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I'd like to, but Mr. Delaney's idea, um, I mean, again, I want, I'd like to see this reduced to at a, at a, at an absolute most one. But also, like, when Mr. Delaney said having, like, Toyota written on it, and maybe the sales and servant, uh, service reception a little bit smaller, then I at least understand it being out on Route 38, because now it feels a little bit like, it's not just directional, it's a little bit advertised of the, you know what I mean? It just looks like a sign that belongs on 38, because it's talking about the business, not just, I mean, sales and service reception don't, aren't specific to Toyota, you know what I mean? And, and have them out on the main road just seems a little, you know, underwhelming, I guess is the, the best way to put it. So that's it. I just wanted to echo what Mr. Delaney suggested.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I agree with that also. We're all set? Uh, do you wanna continue this till, um, how much time do you need, Mr. Sanders?
Um, I can probably have an answer this week.
Okay, so, our next meeting is January 11th.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Though I doubt it is the case, um, we have to open it up to the public.
Yep, yep, that's right. Thank you. Mr. Sanders, so by the 11th, you could have it, right?
Yes.
Very good. At this time, you'd like to open it up to the public, Ms. Brian, or any questions, anybody on the phone for this, submit it all?
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman.
Very good.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may? Uh, comment? Um, I just wanna let the applicant know, you know, if they are putting, um, information on the sign, then the, it may not qualify for the exemption for a directional only sign, so just make sure that they review the requirements in terms of how many signs are allowed on site, et cetera, if they need a, a different waiver or.
Would that make it a pylon?
Hmm.
And if we put, or would that make the directional sign a pylon sign if we put a logo on it?
Um, possibly, but it's not gonna be an exemption if there's, you know. Um, so I'll just have to review it when that comes in, but I just wanna make you aware of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Um, at this time, nothing, nothing from, uh, the public. Mrs. McGinty? Mrs. McGinty, what time can we have? 10 after?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so 7:10 on January 11th would be available.
May we have that motion, please?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second.
On the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close the eyes, have it. Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Fattalia?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Your votes aye. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Sanders.
All right, thank you very much.
Very good. Uh, next item on the agenda is 1118 Chandler Street. Family suite special permit. May, may have a motion to waive the reading of the public notice.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
On the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Fattalia?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Give votes aye. Um, Mr., Mr., Peterson?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Attorney Peterson, Attorney Peterson.
Attorney Robert Peterson for the applicant, uh, Doreen LaFleur. Uh, a little history on this parcel, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, the information of the board. My client was in the process of permitting this property in the fall. Uh, when it was determined upon a fire department inspection of the property in anticipation of the sale to my client. That although the house was advertised as a family suite, uh, it was never permitted as such. Uh, the addition that my client seeks to permit this evening was actually constructed in 1995. And I think it operated as some sort of an illar apartment from 1995 until its removal. Uh, in October of 2020. Uh, my client does not plan, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, to make any alterations, uh, to the property. Uh, the family suite or the addition to the house as constructed, uh, would be fully compliant with all the requirements of the bylaw. For a, uh, family suite. And she's simply seeking a special permit from this board so that, uh, she can get a building permit from the building department to reinstall the kitchen. Her 86-year-old mother is going to live on the premises, uh, and is currently residing in the main section of the house with this.
Very good. Thank you, Attorney Peterson. I have one comment. I kind of wonder how this fell through the cracks 25 years ago. When the building permit to put the addition on the house was given. But it did, and it's too bad because we should have been more observant.
Mr. Chairman, I couldn't concur more, more, and as I told Mrs. LaFleur before she bought the house, I wouldn't have bought it, so, but she did, and here we are.
Well, we'll try to help her out. What, uh, again, just a little history, just to add it. The bill inspector said you'd have to take the kitchen out. How, how much of the kitchen did you take out?
We took out all the cabinets, the plumbing.
Yeah, all right, I understand. Too bad you, you, really all you had to do was take out the sink. That's, but that's all right.
That's not true, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, who's there? Dawn, you're back with us.
Yes, I've been here the whole time.
Oh, nice to hear you. This is, uh, just why I'm saying that, this young lady was in the hospital, uh, for a while. Thank you, Dawn, for that update.
Yeah, so it, it was, it, the kitchen was put in to the addition after it was signed off back in 95. The previous owner did it. He admitted doing it, so he pulled the permit to remove it because it wasn't legal. And then Ms. LaFleur bought it and she's trying to make it legal now.
Sounds like a plan.
Thank you, Dawn.
Very good. Board members. Uh, Mr. Delaney, you have any questions?
Yeah, the, the one question that I have is, uh, I'm trying to go through all the plans. And the in-law apartment has, if I'm not mistaken, must have an entrance into the existing house. And I'm looking, I'm looking through it all and I can't find it. So if somebody could just point it out to me, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with this thing.
Family room, there is a door in the family room of the in-law apartment into the. Into living room.
The thing is, when people are talking to me, and I, it seems like my phone is breaking, uh, my earphones or whatever the hell I hear are breaking up. Can you, do you have a half screen we could just show me?
Yeah.
Or does it, do the other board members, let me put it to you this way. Do the other board members know where that second, that entrance is into the existing house?
I, I believe the door, Mr. Go.
Do we all? Yes?
The door that the builder is showing you now is the actual entrance to the main house.
Okay.
That is the door that connects to the main house.
I guess my question is answered. Thank you. I guess you can't get a better answer than that, can you?
No, very good.
Good going, nice.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, Mr. Delaney?
No, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I'm all set. These are easy. I'm all set.
Mr. Fattalia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Delaney, the door she just showed you was going into the closet, so in case you want to know for sure. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. I think my only question would be, uh, is there sewer on the property?
We just had the sewer installed, uh, last week.
Okay, that's part of the requirement, having sewer attached, uh, to the property. And what is the actual square footage? Do we get that finalized?
Seven hundred and sixty-four square feet, Mr. Fattalia. Seven six four.
Seven six four, okay. With that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Fattalia. Peterson, I appreciate those numbers and, um. Is there, Brian, is there anybody on the phone? A neighbor that might be interested in this?
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let's wait about 30 seconds. I'm not looking at my watch, so I'm, I'm not going to count to 30 seconds, but, uh, Mr. LaFleur, I appreciate your, uh, your endeavor. Took some guts to buy the property with this hanging over you. But, uh, and Attorney Peterson was right in what he said. You don't know what's going to happen, but you're going to be happy with what's going to happen.
From the errands, we got where we are today, right?
That's it. Very good, very good. Okay, Brian, no one on the line?
Still a caller, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you, Brian. What's the pleasure of the board?
The motion to call the public hearing?
On the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The eyes have it. Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Fattalia?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have a motion on, uh, to approve.
Motion to approve the, uh, family suite special permit at 118 Chandler Street.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. The eyes have it. Mr. Fattalia?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. As promised, Mrs. LaFleur, you're all set. As promised, you're all set.
Welcome to Tuxbury.
Thank you.
Now they're going out the door. They're going out the right door.
Next item on the agenda, old business, any old business, uh, Mrs. McGinty?
No, Mr. Chairman.
New business?
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
No business. Well, I have one active, uh, piece of business. I'd like to, uh, wish everybody a happy holiday this coming Friday. And another happy holiday on the, uh, following Friday, Christmas and the, uh. And New Year's. From the board to the public and board members, you've been a great board to work with.
Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of comments if I could.
Oh, my God.
Oh, he never stops.
Here we go, all right, go ahead.
Right along the same lines as you're going, Mr. Chairman. I actually want to say, say a, a special thank you to Dawn. To, to, uh, town planner Anna and Alex, who does a great job, uh, getting us the paperwork. Jason and to Brian for, uh, for getting us on this meeting on a, on a good basis. We've had some tough meetings, though you guys all realize that. We had some tough meetings, but, but, uh, I think we finally have it down. You know, we've had, um, we've had our differences as far as, uh, you know, going through the year. I think you did a good year, good job all year long, myself. We approved a, uh, brand new school, a new firehouse and a lot of other things, so, uh. You know, thank you, uh, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Delaney. Due diligence on this board and, um, I think we, overall, we did a pretty good job, so, um. I also wanted to make sure that everybody was thanked and appreciated their, their services to the town of Tuxbury. That's it.
Thank you, Vinnie.
Nice to hear Dawn's voice back.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone, yeah.
Good thing Vinnie didn't have the yellow pages in front of him.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everybody.
Go moved. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, the eyes have it. Mr. Fattalia?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder? Oh, he's not here yet. Okay. On the motion, um, aye. Chair votes aye. And good night.
Good night.
Happy holidays.
Happy New Year.
Happy holidays.
Bye, everybody.